Welcome back to Troubled, a podcast by survivors of institutional abuse for survivors and the general public. Trigger and content warning on everything, although today, I mean, it's not as bad as usual. We'd love some feedback on what you guys prefer with our coverage of the political hearings. Do you want to hear everything in its entirely unedited? Or would you prefer that we get all snazzy up here with audacity and and put little audio intros and just clip these super long statements up? So this was some interesting jazz that we needed to get to you pretty immediately. Oregon is open for public comment on a new UHS facility. UHS, like the guys who run Provo Canyon, ringing a bell. And it's a 100-bed inpatient, but it's beyond that. It's a $50 million project. And so per Oregon, they need a certificate of need. They've already been rejected by Oregon in the past to set up a facility. And currently, they're citing COVID and the desperate need for mental health, inpatient options and whatnot. But reminder, UHS are the guys who are currently under like, close oversight from the federal government since they got a DOJ $117 million settlement. Check out the links in the show notes so that you can see this directly on the Department of Justice's website. That's what I'll link to. Amongst other things, they were defrauding Medicaid, federal funding of veterans jazz. They were not providing care they were billing for. They were providing improper care, improper chemical and physical restraints. They were basically abducting people and detaining them against their will. They were keeping them for longer than they should have. They never should have been an inpatient in the first place. There are, I think there's like 15 cases that were included in this settlement. We personally know people who were included in this. So this is not just yous, but these are adults as well. This is something we haven't gotten into, but we definitely intend to with season two. Beyond just medical neglect, we also have medical abduction and medical detainment. And all of these things, often the one thing that we can go after is them defrauding the government. And so that is what happened. All of these people got together, all of these claimants got together, Department of Justice, who settled a $117 million suit with UHS, so that UHS could continue to do business with the government and continue to get our money. And for the next five years, they're under direct oversight from the DOJ. So also, there are a lot of class actions and like, personal lawsuits against UHS facilities. And you're actually going to hear from the CEO of Cedar Hills in Oregon, which has plenty of its own issues with violent and abusive staff being called out. Senator Gelsner will hear from her directly. Over like 42, I think they said, calls in three months for Provo. So I just, I don't even know how we're still, we all know how we're still dealing with UHS. This is the big money, you know, deep pocket land. And so we need everyone who has personal experience dealing with UHS nationally to submit public comment to Oregon. And I think primarily be very helpful if we could get people within the mental health field who have experience with sending their clients to and fro with UHS facilities, and especially staff, of course, always staff. So this is an opportunity to speak up the city in Oregon that this facility is destined for, fully supports, you know, this UHS facility. It's called NUCO, by the way. We're also going to link to where you can see the video for this hearing, if you would prefer to watch the Zoom, where you can read the public comments submitted by different organizations to get an idea of what is being asked of you here. And we will also include the email for the individual to send your public comment. And please make it very, very clear in the subject and everywhere else, that this is a public comment on the certificate of need for NUCO UHS. So before we hop in and park our fly on the wall, eavesdropping into this hearing, let's hear from someone that, let's not pretend that we don't have a bias, that we don't have a preference, that we don't just absolutely genuinely for all the right reasons, love Senator Sarah Gelsner of Oregon. But here's a quick message from the good senator, someone that, you know, listen, all of our like, prophecies have come true. We cannot wait to vote for her for president someday. I'm geeking out. I'm serious. I need like a little, a Gelsner pin. There needs to be Gelsner merchandise by the end of 2021. But I definitely want to present to you this invitation from the good senator. And also, may I add, if you are going to be participating in public testimony, might I recommend something that's been very effective for us? And if the community would like to talk about a hashtag that we can all share for this situation with NUCO, I'm totally down. But might I recommend that you make a video testimonial, pop it on YouTube, and then take that transcription and submit that as your public comment. That way, the public actually has access to a format that might actually reach some people. It really does take public awareness sometimes. And during this hearing, unfortunately, we heard supporters, supporters of the UHS NUCO facility, that said they'd been submitting hundreds of letters of local professionals and residents who are supportive of this new facility. So it, this isn't a, oh, well, you know, Paris is a Provo survivor, and hopefully she can help to raise awareness about this situation with NUCO. You can't rest on anybody here. All hands on deck. We need everybody to really line up and support this. Everybody, 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 please, like, use social media, use YouTube. If you want to send us over the link to your YouTube videos, and we will clip up the audio, make a UHS Public Statements from the Community episode, whatever, whatever we need to do. And without further ado, here is our good senator, Sarah Gelsner.
UHS, which operates Provo Canyon School in Utah, is currently trying to open a new facility right here in Oregon. They're using the name NUCO. And right now, they are sitting in front of the Oregon Health Authority, who gets to decide whether or not to allow them to open their doors. The proposal includes beds for adults and seniors, and it also includes 25 beds for children and youth. The public process that the Oregon Health Authority is using includes public testimony. They want to hear from stakeholders and others that have information about whether or not they should allow this facility to open. I think it is important for the Health Authority and the decision makers to hear directly from those who have been impacted by UHS. If you were ever treated at Provo Canyon School, if you're an adult or a youth that has been served by UHS at any of its facilities, this is the time for you to raise your voice. If you were a former employee of UHS, or a current employee of UHS, and you have information that would be helpful to the Health Authority in deciding whether to allow this for-profit organization to open a facility in Oregon, this is a time that you can make a difference. Miranda can tell you all about how to get in touch with this, with this board that's making the decision, and how to submit your public testimony. Those who've experienced these services and those who work inside these facilities know more than anyone what the truth is about these facilities. Please, take this chance, share your stories, help make a difference for those who might be placed in this facility if it's allowed to open. Thank you.
All right. Y'all ready to happen to these hearings? Reminder, I hope you're already sharing this link with everybody on Reddit and Twitter and the socials. We're at Talk Troubled. We need to get this around. Confirming dates, but I believe you have until June 1st to officially submit, and you do need to submit directly to the email in the show notes. Nowhere else. I've had lots of people thinking they submitted testimony in Missouri or other places, because they were sending to them some like aggregated communication tool. But that's not how it works. This is official government public testimony. You need to submit it directly to the email in the show notes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ron Escarda, and I'm an RN and a long, longtime mental health advocate. And I serve as the CEO and Group Director of the Pacific Northwest for UHS. Pam and Matt, thank you for hosting this hearing. I'm here to provide an overview of the proposed project, Willamette Valley Behavioral Health, otherwise known as NUCO. NUCO will be licensed as a 100-bed psychiatric hospital with an integrated behavioral health continuum that includes both inpatient and outpatient services, and several targeted mental health programs for adolescents, adults, and older adults. Our proposed hospital will be located in the city of Wilsonville, as part of the Clackamas and Washington service area. Multnomah County is also included in the defined service area for determining the need for adolescent services. There is documented unmet need in the service area with existing inpatient psychiatric providers operating near capacity. Our quantitative analysis of population growth and existing inpatient psychiatric bed supply demonstrates the service area is severely underbedded, with a current shortage of 130 beds, which is expected to grow to 185 beds by the year 2029. In 2017, OHA denied NUCO's original application to develop a 100-bed psychiatric hospital. As part of its denial, OHA heavily subscribed to the viewpoint that inpatient care was unneeded due to the supposed availability of alternatives and other community investments in outpatient care. Unfortunately, even after implementation of several of the alternatives referenced in OHA's denial, Oregon has continued to be in a state of crisis with respect to mental health and substance abuse, due in large part to the continued lack of access to a sufficient supply of inpatient psychiatric beds. UHS submits that unusual circumstances warrant the approval of this proposed NUCO project. These unusual circumstances include the following: the Oregon mental health crisis as it currently exists, the COVID-19 impact on mental health, a service area inpatient psychiatric health system that is at capacity, the continuation of the ED boarding crisis, and the failure of the Unity Center to resolve persistent problems of inadequate inpatient psychiatric bed supply despite operating since 2017. These five factors clearly point to nonavailability, lack of access, and lack of available alternatives, certainly demonstrating unusual circumstances. Each year, the community-based nonprofit Mental Health America publishes a report titled "The State of Mental Health in America," which ranks states according to various indicators such as prevalence of mental health, access to care, and unmet need. In 2020, overall rankings, Oregon ranked 51st out of the 50 states and the District of Columbia. Furthermore, the prolonged physical and social distancing necessitated by the COVID-19 pandemic is expected to have a significant impact on mental health. Mental health providers and professionals anticipate a large surge in mental health care demands going forward. A September 2020 study from the Journal of American Medical Association found that the prevalence of depressive symptoms in the US was more than threefold higher during COVID-19 compared with pre-COVID. An April 2021 study from the Landset Psychiatry found that 34% of COVID-19 survivors received a diagnosis for a neurological or a psychological condition within six months of their infection. Given the scale of the pandemic and chronic nature of mental health conditions, this signals a current and future surge in demand for mental health services across the continuum of care, including inpatient psychiatric capacity. Oregon providers and OHA should begin preparing immediately for the increasing inpatient psychiatric capacity to meet the coming demand. ED boarding has long plagued the Oregon mental health sector due to an insufficient supply of inpatient psychiatric beds and limited community alternatives. Unfortunately, ED boarding remains a consistent practice, as documented in several news articles over the years, and most recently in the Secretary of State's audit of the Child and Adolescent Mental Health System in the state of Oregon. This not only speaks to the lack of inpatient beds, but also the lack of suitable alternatives to care. This further validates the position that acute inpatient psychiatric care is a specialized set of services which complements rather than substitutes other services compromising behavioral health continuum. The Unity Center was supposed to alleviate, if not solve, the problems of ED boarding in the larger Portland area by also providing a psychiatric emergency service program. This assumption has been revealed as false. The Unity Center's deployment of its psychiatric emergency service has not eliminated need for inpatient psychiatric care, and relying on the experience of Cedar Hills through the end of 2020, requests for inpatient psychiatric care have increased by 65% since the Unity Center opened in 2017. At least a third of the increase is shown directly attributable to requests from the Unity Center itself. There has continued to be growing need for additional supply of inpatient psychiatric beds, even after the development of the Unity Center. Our proposed psychiatric hospital will serve and benefit Oregon residents with behavioral health services and bring significant economic benefits to the community. The proposed behavioral health hospital is a $50 million project with no public funding, that will employ over 195 individuals, generating high-paying and stable employment. The goods and services that NUCO will purchase from other businesses and industries in the community will also provide a multiplier effect that creates economic value to the local economy. NUCO's vision is to be recognized as the premier regional provider of innovative and compassionate behavioral health services, enhancing the overall health of the community. The confluence of factors presented above resulted in strong support from Wilsonville officials and many others within the local community. As an organization and an existing provider in the community, we strongly urge OHA to approve the proposed project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Escarda. And I have on my list Lamar Frizzell from UHS.
From Cedar Hills. Yes, I think he's next.
Good afternoon, and thank you for hosting this public hearing. My name is Lamar Frizzell, and I am the CEO and Managing Director at Cedar Hills Hospital in Portland. I'm also one who struggled with mental health and substance abuse issues in my teens, and lived between parents who faced the same for the balance of their lives. I found my voice in my early 40s, as I tried to avoid the stigma and perceived shame of past personal struggles. I now use my voice to help those who struggle to find theirs. So I gladly loaned them mine today in advocating for NUCO. Cedar Hills opened in 2009, under the ownership of a different company, and was acquired by Universal Health Services in 2012. This transition proved very positive for the hospital, because UHS improved the hospital's quality standard, and developed more structure and clinical and critical patient care systems. UHS now provides us with access to many more resources, and invest greatly into our infrastructure. UHS highly encourages the sharing of best practices among hospitals. NUCO would receive the same support and opportunity as Cedar Hills has. The experience of Cedar Hills has been one of high occupancy, and this serves as a good barometer related to the inpatient psychiatric bed shortages in our state. Cedar Hills opened with just 36 inpatient beds, and has grown to 98 beds over the last 12 years. During this period, the hospital has consistently been at 90% to 95% capacity. When we added a 10-bed expansion to our most acute unit, these beds were filled within 24 hours of opening. At present, Cedar Hills is unable to treat about 75% of requests for care because of the lack of capacity or the lack of specific programming. The payer mix at Cedar Hills experienced significant growth in the number of Medicaid patients in 2020. The increase was 11% over that of 2019. Commercially insured patients remained as a small share, at about 17% to 18% in respective years. Cedar Hills actively works and collaborates with community health, mental health agencies, every county throughout the state, hospital emergency departments, medical groups, individual practitioners, residential treatment centers, veteran services, national and international military installations, and families and patients. Our goal is to ensure that they can receive treatment as quickly as possible when they are in crisis. We also work with these groups and others to ensure that patients can return to their communities with the appropriate resources to foster further recovery. We work alongside these agencies. I highlight just some of those we've worked with over just the last week. Clackamas County Mental Health, NARA Northwest, Sequoia Mental Health, Central City Concern, Providence IOP, Cascadia Behavioral Health. Cedar Hills has an active role in our community by participating in educational activities, such as our alumni support group, community events such as NAMI Walks, Cascade's AIDS Project, Lines for Life Gala, these type of events. Cedar Hills coordinates and/or attends the following meetings. I highlight just a couple. Washington County Mental Health Work Group, OAHHS Policy Committee. Cedar Hills provides significant economic benefits to the community and region. To date, we have 278 staff members. We make numerous local expenditures, which translates into community benefit. We offer several reimbursement programs, tuition and loan forgiveness, CNA training, and social work and counselor licenses. Let me close by stressing the mission of Cedar Hills. Our mission is to provide safe, effective, and compassionate behavioral health treatment for our patients. NUCO will adopt a similar mission. We are joint commission accredited, which is the gold standard for hospital quality metrics and systems. NUCO will strive to achieve these same standards. Our Quality Assurance and Performance Improvement Committee involves all hospital departments, and manages from a patient-centered, evidence-based, metrics-driven perspective, as will NUCO. Our patient satisfaction for inpatient services ranks in the 90th percentile. Our patient satisfaction for outpatient services remains among the top of UHS facilities. NUCO will foster the same emphasis. I want to thank you for letting me use my voice in behalf of NUCO, and for allowing me to loan my voice to those who need these behavioral health beds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frizzell. And Sheila Hamilton, we have about three minutes.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm an author, an advocate, a mother, and a widow, and I've dedicated my adult life to suicide prevention, awareness, and mental health advocacy. And while Ron and Lamar have spoken extensively on how this proposed hospital is going to meet the community's need, I'm hoping you'll allow me to provide a local and personal perspective. My work has given me the opportunity to speak to hundreds of Oregonians about their experience within the state's mental health system before and during the pandemic. And in the past month alone, I've heard from the mother of a previously healthy young woman who broke from reality after contracting COVID-19, the mother of a disabled son who began hearing voices during quarantine, two adults who asked for help in treating worsening depression, and one young woman, a friend of my daughter's, who asked for resources for her crippling anxiety. The pandemic stretched even the healthiest of our families to the breaking point. So I offer what I can, based on my knowledge of Oregon's mental health system, and my profound belief that the brain is an organ like any other organ, and it can get better with rest and care and the proper amount of medication and support. What I know is that the proposed hospital is a desperately needed resource. The hardest part of this conversation I have is when I actually prepare people for how difficult it is to actually get care in Oregon. I describe to them the gauntlet they'll have to run in order to find a bed, the weeks and months they're going to need to wait to secure ongoing counseling, or to find a prescribing physician who can take their insurance. And this comes as shocking and devastating news to these families, who are already scared and overwhelmed, but they're more familiar with the way that cancer or heart disease is treated immediately, with multiple options for care. So I describe to these parents the ridiculousness of taking their loved one to an ER where they'll likely not be treated, but will have to wait along with other patients to be granted one of the few psychiatric beds available in Oregon. We're nearly last in our availability of behavioral health resources, at a time when Oregon families are self-reporting high degrees of depression, anxiety, and suicidal tendencies. 816 people died by suicide in 2020, and the youth line tells us they've been flooded with calls from teens experiencing unprecedented rates of loneliness, self-harm behaviors, and ideation. Our mental health care system is so overwhelmed, yet for the past four years, the state has rejected this viable solution, which is a mental health hospital that could offer these programs and services to a diverse population set. And I know that hospital staff and OHA employees can be a few steps removed from talking to these families, but this drawn-out process has only punished these desperate families further. My late husband experienced his first psychiatric emergency when he was a successful business owner and a loving father. He was told there were no psychiatric beds available in the state, and that he'd need to be housed in the emergency room until one became available. And for nearly a week, an armed guard stood outside his room, making him feel as if he were a prisoner who had done something shameful by getting sick. He received no care, except to listen to the traumatic sounds of an ER. When he was finally transferred, people there worked behind bulletproof glass. The staff was overwhelmed even then. But my brilliant husband had a brain illness, and instead of the kind of support and unconditional love that any patient should receive, he was completely shamed by his experience and devastated by treatment. He died by suicide the day after he was released. Now, I assumed that my nightmare was isolated, and I thought I might be the only person in the world to have witnessed the glaring discrepancy between the way a person with a brain illness is treated versus someone with cancer or heart disease, where compassion and resources seem so limitless. And I believe that mental health should ultimately be treated, just as other illnesses are treated. And the competition that runs so vibrantly through hospitals should ensure these patients have choices to receive the very best care. I worked hard to help raise money for the Unity Center, and I continue to believe in their mission. But we've all got to admit, it is time to expand our limited Oregon system to welcome some new and innovative players, and tell the day that we can offer this broad, comprehensive type of care that activists envision we've got to survive the crisis we're in. We need to do a better job of providing quality care for people in crisis. And four years ago, this certificate was rejected due to the belief there wasn't enough community need. There is more need now than ever. And we can't begin to provide better quality care if we don't even begin meeting the basic needs of our families. That includes meeting the federal mandate to provide enough beds for people in crisis. We have to provide timely, compassionate care for people with mental illness, and stop treating these human beings as if their lives have any less worth or meaning than those who develop a physical illness. It's unconscionable to deny a certificate of need when the need is greater than ever before. I'm going to submit more than 125 letters of support from individuals and professionals in this community who recognize this need and believe this building should be built. I urge you to grant UHS the certificate of need. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we've got about 14 people submitted requests for public comment so far. Before we get there, I do have a couple of questions for, for UHS. So first, wanted to, in, in your words, find out how, as you mentioned in your presentation, you applied previously for certificate of need. And so how does this, this newer proposal differ from the previous proposal?
Well, I think one of the ways that it differs is that we're focusing really on the unusual circumstances, which the Oregon regs allow for the certificate of need evaluation process. And, and we believe that the need is significantly greater now than it was in 2017. The cost of the project has escalated. We continue to be committed to the project. We believe strongly that Oregon deserves better. And, and we want to be a collaborative, cooperative member of the community's continuum of care, and hope to do so both through Cedar Hills, but also through Wilsonville, as we partner and collaborate and work with all of the other behavioral healthcare providers in the community, who are going to be increasingly desperately needed to meet the needs that we've documented are fairly significant.
Okay. And then question about, you may know that Oregon's focused on community-based behavioral health services. And I think I wanted to know how the proposal would integrate and, and work effectively with those community-based services.
So as I briefly mentioned in my comments, I mean, we're, we're attempting to develop not only an inpatient facility in Wilsonville that's 100 beds, but also a fully integrated behavioral health continuum, which includes a variety of different levels of outpatient. We already have that kind of a system established at Cedar Hills. And so I'd like to see if Lamar could talk a little bit about how his facility, in current actual practice, does exactly what you just asked, Matt.
Matt, it's, it's a very good question, because we don't live on an island, we don't live in a We don't live in a silo, and that's one of the reasons why in my in my comments that I highlight that we have worked even this week with numerous community agencies, several county mental health centers. I mentioned NARA, Sequoia, I mentioned Central City Concern, I mentioned Providence IOP, just to name a few. We are regularly in contact and in collaboration with these entities so that we can build bridges from our hospital to appropriate levels of care after they step out of crisis stabilization for our patients to these basic entities and facilities. We do this every single day. We are on the phone with them, we collaborate with them, and we continue to partner with them, and that's what we will continue to do.
Okay, thank you. Finally, the last question I have, and then I would, if there are other OHA staff that have additional questions. So how will the new UHS hospitals serve everyone in the service area regardless of payer?
Well, I mean, I think that's something that we do across the board with at UHS. We typically, we operate 24/7 assessment and referral services for the communities that we operate in. We typically are payer-blind. We have been for years, as you're aware, have been attempting to get access and contracts to be able to provide additional services to Medicare and Medicaid clients within the state of Oregon, only to be rebuffed by the CCOs over and over again. And they're the same CCOs that continue to refer and make significant ED transfer requests to Cedar Hills. So I think that our our expanded role in the community is only going to be a significant benefit to the community's continuum of care and will be a helpful relief and pressure valve, not only for the Unity Center, but for all of the other providers who have inpatient services and who struggle with the growing number of patients who are sitting in EDs, awaiting a bed, or awaiting care and treatment. And we hope to be a creative and collaborative part of that solution and that matrix.
First person that we had sign up to provide public comment is Senator Sarah Gelsner.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. For the record, my name is Sarah Gelsner. I'm a state senator from Senate District 8, which is the Corvallis and Albany area. I chair the Senate Committee on Human Services, and for the last several years, I've really been focused on access to services for adolescents and particularly the experience of children and youth when they are in the care of facilities. I know there are others that are going to speak to their concerns about the certificate of need, and I do acknowledge we have significant needs in our mental health system in Oregon. But I do not believe that bringing another United Health Services system to Oregon is in the best interest of Oregon and certainly not in the best interests of the 25 adolescents that might be in those beds. The first point that I would make is that in their own materials, this organization references Provo Canyon School in Utah. I actually was at Provo Canyon last week, meeting with residents and community members and individuals who had survived their time at Provo Canyon School. There have been, in the last two years, over 31 critical incidents at Provo Canyon School, which is a UHS inpatient facility for youth, and there have been a number just within the last handful of months. I'd like to mention a couple of them. There was video footage of staff punching students. There was a youth found hanging from a noose. Access to medical care was delayed for that student. Frequent written complaints to licensing from staff about understaffing. Students reporting that they were being physically and emotionally abused. One student in general, in particular, noted that staff had pinched her, pulled her hair, twisted her wrists, pushed her to the floor harshly, threatened her, and made comments about her looks that negatively impacted her self-esteem. There was a staff member that reported about patients being forced by maintenance to clean up sewage after both bathrooms and the hallways were flooded with poop water and toilet paper. Staff wrote about being urged to lie to the state regarding their ratios. There was another single day in which there were 16 restraints of youth, and a staff member reported that she was most concerned about 12-year-olds placed on units with sexually acting out 17 to 18-year-olds. There was another student who was grabbed by the shirt, placed in a supine position, and back and legs were pressed into the ground in order to obtain compliance. Now, those are kids that are not necessarily from Utah, because like Cedar Hills, many of the kids at Provo Canyon School come from states that are not Utah. One of those children was an Oregon youth, a 14-year-old in the Oregon foster care system that had an intellectual disability. I accessed the public records about her. She was only at the facility for a handful of months, and during that three-month period, this 14-year-old foster child with an intellectual disability from Oregon, in the care of United Health Services at Provo Canyon School, which is cited as a successful program in the applications, experienced 42 incidents of assault by a peer, physical or chemical restraint, and seclusion in a three-month period. Again, 42 separate instances of assault, physical restraint, chemical restraint, and seclusion via public records. Prior to this, UHS insisted that they did not use seclusion, and this was in response to Paris Hilton telling her story about being served at Provo Canyon School. They said, "New management." However, I obtained these public records. This happened about 18 months ago. So this is current current practice. We should not be trusting any further Oregon youth to this program, to a facility operated by this organization, and we should not be inviting children into our state from other places to have this treatment. Finally, we have significant needs in our mental health system, especially as it relates to adolescents. This does not solve that problem. This is not the hole that we have. We need facilities and services for our adolescent aid and assist program. We need step-down programs. We need community services. We need intensive family supports and respite. That is where we should be investing our time and energy. This proposal does nothing to address those needs. I strongly urge you to reject this proposal and to absolutely reject allowing any other child to ever be subject to the care of this organization. They have showed us that they cannot be trusted to do so safely, and we have our own youth and our own public records to demonstrate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Gelsner. Next on my list, I have Commissioner Sharon Myron.
Thank you so much for this opportunity here today. I'm Sharon Myron, a Monloma County Commissioner and also an emergency physician. As a commissioner, an emergency physician, and former president of the Oregon Chapter of the American College of Emergency Physicians, I bring the perspective of both a policymaker and frontline healthcare system provider to inform my opinions on the certificate of need application submitted by NUCO. As has been alluded to by everyone who spoke today, many things are needed to improve behavioral health systems in Oregon. This was concluded by myriad committees over decades, most recently the Governor's Behavioral Health Advisory Council, where I was honored to serve. We have an immense unmet need for supportive housing, more culturally responsive providers and peer providers, and a continuum of services to keep people with behavioral health challenges out of crises and out of emergency departments. And we urgently need a rational approach to decreasing the use of the Oregon State Hospital, where much of the dysfunction of our current inpatient system originates. One thing that has not surfaced as a need in all of these meetings of experts and frontline workers and people with lived experience of mental illness who participate in how we can improve our system, one thing we do not need is an increased inventory of inpatient psychiatric beds. As an ER doctor, I see the impact of our inadequate behavioral healthcare system every single shift that I work. I treat people in the ER because they couldn't access the care they needed to prevent crisis. And then once they're in crisis, there is nowhere for them to go. It can be so tempting to believe we could solve this problem only we had more inpatient beds. It would be so easy. But an inpatient unit is most often not what people need, and I can say that working in the ER and seeing this need. They could use supportive housing, substance use treatment, residential treatment for people with co-occurring disorders, peer respite, transitional housing, intensive outpatient therapy, ACT teams, so much more. But they don't need inpatient psychiatric beds most often, and we have the beds we need, especially if the Oregon State Hospital's aid and assist population was reduced, allowing existing hospitals to move their civilly committed patients through the system effectively. That's the problem. A new inpatient hospital is a shiny new object. It feels like it can make a difference when in fact it won't, at least not the difference that we need. I know and feel the temptation of wanting this shiny object. I've faced it all the time for years, but I've learned through decades of experience and listening to the true experts in the system that this is not the answer. The voices of people who use, work in, and understand our system in Oregon have made clear that the state does not need an increase in acute inpatient psychiatric beds, particularly in a large for-profit institution that does not effectively serve Medicaid patients and will entrench a two-tiered system and increase disparity here, managed by a multinational company with a questionable track record on patient rights, care, and safety, some of which were so well and tragically described by Senator Gelsner just now. This is a change Oregon, excuse me, does not need. I really appreciate the opportunity to testify here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Michael Sorensen.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Sorensen. I am a three-time suicide survivor and an employee at Cedar Hills Hospital. I wanted to speak today a little bit about my personal experience, both as a suicide survivor needing inpatient care, where I was at Providence for over 30 days the first time. I was at Providence again for two weeks until they could not take my insurance any longer, and they transferred me to the Oregon State Hospital. The best argument that I've heard for building this hospital is the fact that we've deinstitutionalized patients with mental health issues and swapped them for the institution of jail. Monloma County's sheriff will tell you that they are the biggest mental health service provider in the state of Oregon, and that's because we have done such a disservice to people with mental illness. Oregon has 16 or so psychiatric beds per 100,000, and the recommendation is that we have 50 per 100,000. This new proposed hospital will not get us to that that appropriate ratio, but it will get us closer. I work in this milieu as the Business Development Director, and I have the opportunity to talk with many of our community partners, including those that we contract with or that we have professional agreements with, which include Providence, specifically agreements for transferring patients back and forth between St. Vincent's, specifically for taking up their outpatient patients. And I appreciate the opportunity to be involved in these conversations because it helps me understand the the unique and difficult situations that that line staff get put in when executive level folks speak and don't speak the same language as those who are working on the front lines. I appreciate. I appreciate the idea that we don't need additional beds, that things could be better if we worked if we worked better at the beginning, prevention and least restricted space. But I would tell you today that I would be dead if I did not have that space. I would. I wouldn't be able to speak today on behalf of those who need this service. So I'm going to leave this with a quote from the Foreign Director of the Oregon Health Authority, Bruce Goldberg, who stated in a recent Oregonian News article that Oregon needs more outpatient and inpatient capacity. We heard today that the state hospital has asked the federal government to allow them to stop taking new patients. I don't understand why folks can't see that this is a need, and I leave my heartfelt testimony that this is this is a necessary opportunity. Not only does it not cost this people of Oregon any money in subsidy, as Unity and others do, but it's coming with a with an economic boost during a time when people are suffering and also at a time when we know that 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 suffering includes a heightened level of depression, anxiety, and suicidal ideation. I see it every day, folks calling, and that's not even being able to take 20, 30% of those calls. Thanks.
Thank you. Next on list, I have Chris Bonaf.
This is Chris Bonaf. I'm the Executive Director of the State Chapter of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, known as NAMI Oregon. We are a grassroots membership governed organization that offers free education, support, and advocacy services to individuals living with mental illness and their families and other loved ones. We hold affected party status in this application as we did with the first application. We have 15 chapters across the state that annually serve about 8,000 Oregonians. Our members have direct lived experience with mental illness. We're individuals living with illness. We're family members or friends of individuals living with mental illness. We're parents raising children, and often we check more than one box. Just as the last application, we are neutral on this proposal, as we are on all proposals, certificate of need proposals. We support the con process. We believe careful analysis is necessary because just this proposal specifically, but others just like it, once they're built, they have profound impacts on the system. Those impacts could be good or bad. Where they are bad, such things cannot be easily undone. These are physical structures that are up, built, invested in, and once they're opened, they will bill. We will provide more substantive comments, written comments to be submitted at a later date before the deadline. They will mirror identically generally our comments on the first application. We certainly urge the Oregon Health Authority to stick to a careful process based on hard analysis, because let's be clear what this is not. This is not economic development. Economic development should not be an argument for any project. We are not people availing ourselves of services here to help benefit the economy of Wilsonville or any community. We're here to avail ourselves of services because of need, and any decision should be based on need. But also what this proposal is, is not a broad solution to access problems in Oregon that we all acknowledge exists. As Commissioner Myron alluded to, many of us serve on work groups. This will not solve access problems. Emotional pleas aside, what this is, is a specific proposal to build a large hospital that will serve the Portland metropolitan area, that will be accessible to the Portland metropolitan area, will not necessarily be a resource to the state of Oregon. I believe that argument is mistaken in the sense that we are not a commodity to be shipped to different regions across the state to be served. If we are shipped across to be served in a facility like this or a facility that already exists, that is a failure of the system. We don't accept that in other healthcare, but that's the solution to regional scarcity of resources. Again, our written testimonials cover what we consider the essential factors that should carry considerable weight in Oregon Health Authority's analysis. Much of that will be repetitive. The one thing that we talk about changes. So in brief, to what those comments will cover, again, are these services necessary in the Portland area on this scale? You know, 100 beds, for example, is that actually necessary in the Portland metropolitan area? Weighing, you know, weighing in that factor is the misuse of beds currently in our inventory. So on any given day, between 50 to 90 inpatient psychiatric beds are being filled by people with long-term needs that the state needs to serve. So these are short-term beds. They have long-term, they're being used more for custodial care than anything else. Logjam in the system indicates that we could open up a significant portion of capacity for inpatient psychiatric care if only we opened up services elsewhere and built up services elsewhere to properly serve people who are basically parked in inpatient psychiatric care. That would be a factor as to whether or not there is a real necessity for 100 beds or 50 beds or 20 beds, and should help, we believe, guide that analysis as to the scale of the project. And then I think importantly is what impact will this hospital have on other providers and services in the region? Will this actually add capacity or will this simply supplant capacity? Again, once this is built, whether good or bad, it will have profound impacts. If those impacts are negative and it drives people out of the market and away from providing inpatient psychiatric care, then it is not. then it is not a net gain to the system. It's simply replacing uh, these, you, these beds, replacing other beds that would then close because the economics are not feasible for providers currently providing care to stay in business. Believe there's a new factor that will add to our comments and it should be weighed in this analysis is how and whether this proposal fits in with the state's vision for nine-eight-eight implementation. So with the, the recent um, adoption by the federal government and the state is now in, in the process of adopting the new nine-eight-eight system, which allows the state to put a fee on telecom and that fee is allowed to build out the crisis system and the goal of that crisis system have done well is to decrease the need for inpatient care overall and also the burden held on emergency rooms. Um, the, it, those are indeed the stated goals and that is the goal of nine-eight-eight implementation legislation moving through the legislature and our crisis system is enhanced. Are these beds absolutely necessary in that new system? Um, I'll just conclude with this. You know, NAMI, like with any proposal like this, we want them judged carefully for what they are. Um, this is not a, a solution broadly for Oregon. This is a specific proposal, much like Unity was alluded to. Unity, one of the failings of Unity is it was advertised as a solution. All it was, was a hospital. Um, that, all this is, is a hospital. Um, in evaluating that, it's necessity. We believe that the key questions that we will be putting forward um, and that others may or may not raise, uh, will help guide the state's analysis of whether this, this project is truly needed at this capacity to serve the Portland metropolitan area. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so the next on my list is Jacek Hiacek.
I'm Dr. Yatsak Hachuk. I also go by Jack. And I am the Director of Dynamic Changes LLC. I'm a retired psychologist and program director in this and three other states. For the purpose of this issue, I have managed hospital services in Denver, Colorado and helped develop Oregon's Mid-Wilamette Valley Acute Psychiatric Hospital System. I will not spend time on reiterating the valid concern Senator Gelsner has already elucidated and cast serious doubt on the ability of this provider to meet practice standards, even assuming such services are needed here. The state of Oregon rates at the bottom of states in community mental health services as public and professional testimony to the Oregon Legislature over the past ten years has consistently pointed out affordable and comparatively less expensive community services are needed badly to meet the psychiatric needs of citizens and prevent crises which might require exorbitantly expensive inpatient services or result in ED boarding. Spending more money on inpatient services only perpetuates Oregon's crisis of insufficient community services by diverting the funds needed for effective community services to the extremely expensive inpatient services necessary for crisis intervention. If Oregon is to truly begin meeting the psychiatric needs of its citizens, it is imperative it stops using available funds on expensive inpatient crisis services and instead redirects its expenditures to the community services, which will save money and prevent the unnecessary crises. The, there are ways to get ahead of the crisis curve, just like there are ways to actually develop a savings account to prevent continuous and expensive indebtedness. Let's use accepted and proven management methods to get our way out of our destructive self-fulfilling cycle resulting from not spending, from not funding the necessary services. Thank you.
Thank you. Linnea Lindsay.
This is Dr. Linnea Lindsay. I'm the Director of Behavioral Health Services for Legacy Health and I'm a licensed psychologist. Um, I want to go on record today in representation of Legacy Health to say that we are opposed to this project because we don't think it addresses the current needs and it diverts resources and increases costs. Legacy offers a diverse set of behavioral health services across Northwest Oregon and Southwest Washington, including the fact that we offer twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five psychiatric services in all of our hospital emergency departments. We also arm the managing partner for the Four Health System Partnership that offers Unity Center for Behavioral Health to the community with an emphasis on trauma-informed whole-person care. Our communities need additional resources and they need them now, not those that may take years to stand up or will only serve approximately five percent of the people who are challenged with mental health and substance use conditions. The proposal of UHS NewCo proposed, does not advance and in fact is a deterrent to the region realizing the October twenty-twenty recommendation of the Governor's Behavioral Health Advisory Council. These, um, uh, this service will cost this uh, state significantly more because we are funding a level of care and an acute level of care and that will also deplete the resources available for community-based behavioral health resources, uh, certain services called for by the council. The council charged with the development of recommendations aimed at improving access to effective behavioral health services and supports for all Oregon adults and transition-aged youth with serious mental illness and co-occurring mental illness and substance use disorders recommends specific actions and investments necessary to improve access to behavioral health care that are responsive to people's individual needs and characteristics and improving health outcomes. The final report included recommendations in three areas, programming services, workforce and housing, and housing supports. Of note, the Governor's Council's recommendations did not include any new acute care beds, nor any dedicated psychiatric hospital. At this time, there is actually no indication that there's a need for additional acute psychiatric beds. Additionally, there's no evidence of any net bed loss, rather there's been a net gain of beds in the last five years. The bricks and mortar and program recommendations of the Governor's Council were very targeted, specifically things like non-clinical peer-run respite centers, uh, continued operation and study of existing certified community behavioral health clinic demonstration sites, uh, the addition of a sixteen-bed secure residential treatment facility for defendants who do not have fitness to proceed in a criminal manner, which would move some of the aid and assist defendants out of the state hospital, which would allow a better flow for acute psychiatric hospital services. Um, another item was the design of a statewide crisis system through OHA's ongoing development of statewide crisis and behavioral um, health support tool, tool called the Oregon Behavioral Health Access System. Additionally, the, uh, the development of additional residential treatment facilities and secure residential treatment facility and capacity. An addition, no, freestanding psychiatric hospital is not what's needed right now. Rather, we need to invest time and energy in building out the improvement of our community-based alternatives and access for care to all, especially low-income and underinsured and non-insured. That can happen now, not a few years into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now call Tara Candela.
Hello, thank you. My name is Tara Candela. I'm a former attorney and currently a psychiatric nurse and a licensed, a newly licensed psychiatric nurse practitioner. I am also myself, as others have mentioned, a consumer of uh, mental health services who may need to seek services in the future. Um, I am someone who has been hospitalized for psychosis in the past um, in another state, not here in Oregon. Um, my experience is why I left law and I returned to nursing. Um, personally, I only want the best for my patients, my family, and myself. I am opposed to this for several reasons. First of all, my experience at Cedar Hills Hospital, which as we all know now is owned by the same corporation as um, this proposed hospital. Um, regarding that, I was ethically challenged every single day that I worked in their admissions department. We were advised to take actions that were in clear violation of federal regulations. When a hospital accepts Medicare, they're required to accept transfers in the order in which the requests are received, regardless of a patient's ability to pay. In fact, they're not even permitted to ask about insurance status under these regulations. From the manual in the assessment department, fall of twenty eighteen, quote, "Many of the private insurance transfers come in at different times of the day, and if we do not actively continue to monitor and follow up on new transfer requests, we lose those and are left with unfunded or Medicaid patients. The timeliness of our response to ERs is being actively monitored by corporate on a daily basis." They were cited for this practice. Any contention they didn't know what they were doing is kind of questionable considering they're supposed to be experts in the field. On that point here, um, the CMS findings stated, "The standard is not met as evidenced by, based on interviews, review of transfer request documentation for nine out of nine patients for whom other hospital EDs requested transfer to Cedar Hills Hospital for specialty psychiatric services who were not accepted for transfer, patients one through nine, review of intake activity log documentation, and review of hospital policies and procedures and other documents. It was determined that the hospital failed to develop and enforce entala policies and procedures to ensure its compliance with recipient hospital responsibilities." And then asterisk, " recipient hospital obligations were not met as patients were not accepted for transfer by Cedar Hills Hospital in the order in which they were received at the time of the requests, but rather were evaluated for acceptance, acceptance based on insurance and ability to pay." And then there's a whole list of other reasons why. In addition to this obvious problem, also the quality of care there was abysmal. I didn't know any better because I was pretty much new to psych, so. But um, one night on one of our units, there was only one nurse by herself. She agreed to work that shift if they promised not to leave her with more than five patients. On that same night, I was told to pull a patient with pretty high medical needs off of an inpatient unit over at Providence-St. Vincent and to get them transferred in before midnight. I absolutely protested this and I don't know what happened after I left that evening other than hearing in the morning that the DON, who is no longer there from that, I think that was around fall of twenty eighteen, came in in the middle of the night to work for a couple of hours. They literally had one nurse alone on a psychiatric unit overnight. Units there closed pretty routinely due to insufficient staffing and their staffing matrix typically only called for two to three nurses. So that, that in itself is a huge problem. So I encourage anyone to make, making decisions to ask for their staffing grid and compare it to any of the staffing at Providence or Unity, assuming that information is readily available to OHA. I also am primarily opposed due to the history of this corporation, which was uh, mentioned by Senator Gelsner. Um, this is frankly, one of the most serious issues present here. Uh, Universal Health Services is a highly Google-able entity. They recently paid over a hundred million dollars to settle fraud allegations brought by the Department of Justice. As well, multiple journalistic sources have done exposes on the high level of safety violations that occur. I think BuzzFeed was one of them. Allegations of abuse and patient death. And there are written public comments that you can review from um, patient family members of adolescents who died in their facilities. And finally on that, others have already stated, this is not the service that we need here in Oregon. I see the same patients over and over again and I have nowhere to send them. If we had somewhere to send them, we would have inpatient psychiatric beds for those who need them acutely. Thank you very much.
Uh, next I have Michael Helpchuk. And my apologies, Michael, if I butchered your name.
That's okay. Thank you. Um, I, I'm Michael Lebichek. Um, I am the executive director of Full Time. Um, and Full Time is a peer-run organization. That is to say that each and every staff member has lived experience and our uh, board is by by bylaws has a majority of people who are, have lived experience too. Um, and I'm um, speaking today in strong opposition uh, for quality of care reasons that have been well documented. All one has to do is search and I found a lot. Um, and uh, uh, for the for-profit reason, um, you know, that's, that's another one. I mean, heck, this is, again, this is not an economical decision we're talking about. This is not about how we, people who receive services can be commodities for a for-profit organization. Rather, this is about how we can improve our system. Our system will not be improved by adding psychiatric bed after psychiatric bed. Once somebody is hospitalized, that hospitalization can be pivotal in terms of how well they do in the future. Their mental health recovery may be hindered or assisted by hospitalization. Hospitals that are understaffed or have poorly trained staff or have policies and practices that are outlined outside of the margins of good practice can cause an individual who goes into such a hospital to have many more hospitalizations out of being traumatized at the hospital. Uh, you've heard Sarah Garrett, Senator Garrett Garrison talk about uh, the challenges that, that UHS has presented to communities. Do we want that here? Do we want more and more people being traumatized as patients within a hospital setting? No, I don't think we do. Moreover, there are many other alternatives to that that have been talked about, ways that we can indeed improve the system such that people don't rise to the level of need that they require hospitalization. And that is a fairly easy thing to do. The blueprint is all over the place. All we need to do is invest in community resources and supports, uh, peer resources, um, alternatives to the traditional mental health system that have been demonstrated to yield extremely positive outcomes and have a recovery orientation rather than a patient orientation. And uh, so because we don't want people to be patients forever, do we? I mean, my goodness, we can help people get along the, the road to helping the in, in, involved in driving their own lives and recovering and getting back on their feet. And hospital stays might need to be part of that occasionally in extreme circumstances, but we're way overdoing it here. And we need to invest in those resources that help people get on with their meaningful lives that they can have if only they get the support that they need. And anyway, um, I've been hospitalized a total of eighteen times. Um, eight in the state hospital settings, all state hospitals, hospitalizations and fifteen others occurred before I was twenty-seven in nineteen eighty-seven, when I got introduced to the peer recovery movement. Then hospitalized three times since. Do the math, think of the savings and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Daryl Walker.
I'm Daryl Walker, PhD. I'm the CEO for Cascadia Healthcare. We're the largest comprehensive community mental health center in the state of Oregon. We're also a federally qualified health center system. Um, I've had several uh, careers in the state of Oregon as an employee. Uh, the first one was as a clinical psychologist on adolescent unit in the state hospital here in Oregon. And then quite a few years later, I was the head of Child and Adolescent Mental Health in the state of Oregon. Um, I, I just want to reiterate my support or state my support for the Senator's comments about children and out-of-state placement. Um, it's, it's extremely inappropriate to place children out of state. It's also very ill-advised to place children in the psychiatric hospital in large part. Um, it separates the child from the community, uh, particularly if they're out of state. Uh, the effective treatment for children needing mental health services is clearly in the context of the family system and wraparound services. Uh, I, I'm very concerned and I'm opposed to this hospital uh, system proposal certification for a whole lot of different reasons. Uh, as a longstanding CEO for Cascadia Behavioral Healthcare, uh, I believe, I often hear that the state system is broken for mental health. It's not broken, it's starved. Uh, it's starved for community services. Oregon is very innovative and creative when it comes to uh, alternatives for state hospitals, which is a very uh, important thing and we should be proud of. Unfortunately, it's incredibly underfunded as I think other people preceding me have, have underscored. I am very concerned about the quality of care for freestanding, for-profit uh, inpatient uh, facilities. They're well-known throughout the United States. They tend to be very focused on a, a wallet biopsy to determine whether the uh, possible admitting patient uh, has uh, coverage for insurance. Uh, their relationship with the community oftentimes is a non-existent. So when they have extended, if they exhausted the benefits for inpatient, they simply discharge into the community without any follow-up care arranged. Um, so the, the very inadequate placement uh, for patients uh, is a serious problem. The reference to uh, uh, boarding in emergency departments is clearly a problem, but it's, the solution is not admitting these individuals to a hospital uh, and then discharging them back into the community without a close collaborative link with the community. First and foremost, the large majority of people admitted uh, or being served in an ED uh, is because of a lack of community resources. Cascadia provides a lot of those resources. We're overwhelmed. We have wait lists. Uh, and of, and a major crisis in this system in any community mental health system within Oregon is the problem with uh, uh, resources with staff uh, because of the lack of funding and the increasing expense uh, for living within the community. Oftentimes, it's not unusual to have, lose staff, RNs and so forth to hospital systems that pay much better, unfortunately. Unfortunately, Oregon's community mental health system, uh, salaries are very, very inadequate.
Okay, thank you. That's, you're out of time.
Okay.
And again, if you aren't able to get all your public comment, um, please submit those in writing to us. Next we'll go to Malcolm Ricks.
Hello. I am Malcolm Ricks with Safe Transportation. We have submitted written con-comment for the record. I'm not going to read that in here. What I want to share is this. We are the secure transportation company that gets everybody from Unity to Cascadia to Corvallis, to the state hospital. And in one situation, we actually had to take a youth to Bozeman, Montana. I thought that was ridiculous when you're talking about community-based treatment. I agree with a lot of what I've heard today. We do need community-based treatment. I wish we had no need for a secure transportation company, but the truth is, we have that need and there is the need for additional 100 beds. Um, I've never done research on universal health, health services. I guess I will, but, um, the, the, the 100 additional beds is necessary. Um, the unfortunate bit, some things, some bad things happen by individuals, but leadership tries to weed those people out. I know with, as a transportation provider, we believe in non-intimidating tactics because primarily we do students. Um, and, and I will say, the trauma of traveling to Bozeman, Montana with somebody, it impacts the family when they can't visit their loved ones. Um, I don't know who it's going to be, but 100 additional beds, I'm all for it. And everybody we've worked with at Cedar Hills, if it's the same company, they've been great too. Because we transfer people there and they've never delayed in getting somebody in. I said it would be brief and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next I have, uh, Robin Henderson.
Thank you, Mary, very, very much. For the record, I'm Dr. Robin Henderson. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist. I'm also the Chief Executive of Behavioral Health for Providence here in the Oregon region. And I've worked in mental health in Oregon for the bulk of my career over the last 40 years. Um, I could tell you that Providence's Health and Services is opposed to the Certificate of Need request from NewCo for the following reasons. First of all, NewCo has not considered Oregon's needs as part of this proposal. Providence and in fact myself have been part of the Governor's Behavioral Health Advisory Council, the Children and Youth with Special Healthcare Needs Task Force, the current Governor's 988 Task Force, the Children's System of Care Council, Commissioner Myron's Multnomah County Redesign Project and numerous other efforts, including right now the current Beacon Project, looking to create a sobering station in Multnomah County right now. These are all efforts aimed at stabilizing and improving Oregon's mental health system over the last five years and in all of these conversations and many, many others. No one has ever recommended acute, additional acute psychiatric beds as a solution, especially 100 beds in Wilsonville, Oregon, with no ability to take Medicaid patients, medically compromised patients or individuals who are diverted from jail directly. Because those are the types of patients that Cedar Hills does not take. Cedar Hills has not participated or even presented in any of those tables that I've just named for the record. Additionally, approving this C N is going to reach strict access for all Oregonians, including those on Medicaid. Because let's remember, this is not a facility that can take the types of Medicaid patients that need care. Because of the IMD rule and other issues, they do not take Medicaid patients and they routinely refer them to Providence where we have to take them. But most importantly, building out the highest, most expensive level of psychiatric care is not Oregon's solution. Our goal should be to have existing systems and structures working properly. The current backlog of civilly committed patients from the Oregon State Hospital is 30 to 50% of my census on any given day. If we resolve that and invest in secure residential treatment facilities across the greater Portland area and across Oregon, guess what? We have sufficient capacity in the system to care for people. And I'll tell you that I personally sat with Mr. Escarta and explained those options for adolescent aid and assist, for adult deferrals from the Oregon State Hospital and other types of things that Oregon actually needs. But he remains committed to driving a proposal for increased for-profit commercially insured psychiatric beds. I'm also going to tell you this isn't going to help Oregon's emergency department boarding crisis. In the NewCo Certificate of Need application, Cedar Hills does not take law enforcement directly. They do not take ambulances directly. They have to be medically cleared first. And they also don't take the diversions from jail like we were talking about previously. This is how people come into psychiatric care. So the burden is on acute care hospitals to vet and clean people up so that then Cedar Hills can cherry pick and decide who it is that they're going to take. I could tell you also that I have concerns about quality and safety. The existing Cedar Hills facility continues to struggle with multiple complaints and concerns. A recent CMS survey completed February 28th, 2019 states uncorrected deficiencies were identified and notes that three of the complainants were substantiated with a fourth complaint unsubstantiated, but noting several other findings of deficient practice related to the patient.
Okay.
Builted in a 98% clause. So I'll just close by saying, I would highly recommend you see our testimony. We remain opposed to this because this is a solution that was proposed by out-of-state entities and was not created by Oregonians for Oregonians. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Casey Lewis.
Uh, hello there. My name is Casey Lewis. Uh, I am the Managing Attorney for the Mental Health Rights Project at Disability Rights Oregon. Uh, Disability Rights Oregon is a statewide nonprofit that upholds the civil rights of people with disabilities, uh, as well as being the federally authorized and mandated protection and advocacy system for Oregon. Uh, I've already submitted written comments from DRO, so I will keep my testimony brief. Uh, in short, we share a lot of the concerns that have been expressed by others um, during these, uh, comment period, uh, including particularly Senator Gelsner and Commissioner Myron. Uh, and I want to thank them for, uh, being, uh, willing to sort of stand up and, uh, talk about some of their experiences in this. Um, we do not see this as being what this community needs right now. Uh, our advocacy has been for increased community resources, uh, increased supportive housing, uh, ways to get people who are suffering from mental illness back into the community, uh, and a large influx of, uh, these inpatient beds is really not what is needed. Um, and I think can be potentially very harmful to the behavioral health system that we've been trying to build. Um, in addition, I think there are some very valid concerns that we've heard voiced from a few people uh, about the effect that this has on the mental health workforce. I will say in my previous position to this one, uh, I was managing a grant program, uh, for local programs uh, to treat particularly the most acute people, uh, who had been cycling through jails and emergency departments. And I had a number of programs that were really struggling to hire people, um, just because the workforce wasn't there. So diverting a significant chunk of mental health workforce into a facility that it is not clear is actually serving the need, uh, could have a really detrimental effect, uh, on our ongoing efforts to build these community resources, uh, that are what is actually needed in this community. Um, thank you very much for this time, uh, and that is, uh, our comment. Uh, our additional written comments have been submitted.
Thank you. Next I'll call Katie Borlog.
Hi, my name is Katie Borlog. I am a Divisional Director of Business Development with UHS. I am a native Oregonian, born and raised. Uh, I began my career with UHS 10 years ago last month at Cedar Hills Hospital as a mental health technician. While working at Cedar Hills Hospital, I often referred my own friends and family to Cedar, Cedar Hills Hospital and outpatient services. That is the standard we set for our hospital and our facilities. I have also had the fortune to work nationally with other facilities and understand healthcare is a local matter. I have seen firsthand as a healthcare worker in Oregon as a sister, a friend, a niece, the unmet need for mental health services in Oregon is not a new problem. Fortunately, the need has only grown since I began working with UHS. I believe the quality, I believe in the quality of care at Cedar Hills Hospital and have continued to refer my own friends and family as recently as this year to Cedar Hills outpatient services. I only hope one of my friends or family members does not need inpatient treatment because I am fearful they will not be able to get the care they need. Because I see daily how many patients Cedar Hills Hospital has to turn away every day because they are at capacity. As a native Oregonian, UHS employee, former Cedar Hills Hospital employee, and one who has friends and family members with serious mental illness in Oregon, I urge you to approve the C N application and to do so swiftly. I also have to add and, and comment that it is untrue that we do not accept Medicaid patients. In 2020, 50% of our patients were, had either Medicaid, Medicare or Medicaid, uh, for 27% Medicaid, 23% Medicare to be more specific. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think the last person that we have signed up to provide public comment is, uh, Commissioner Mary Sterrett.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. I'll keep it brief. My name is Mary Sterrett. I am the Chair of the Amhill County Board of Commissioners and I'm also the liaison to Health and Human Services, very active in the recovery community. And one of the things that we have heard here today is that this removes resources from the local area and that I don't think is true. This is the best of both worlds. This is a project that really is local for so many of the counties surrounding the Wilsonville area. For us, it would be a short 20-minute drive for patients in crisis to be able to go and receive care and still be close to their communities. We have a number of pioneering peer-assisted crisis residential treatment facilities and a number of different, different options in our community. But there are times when this is an appropriate treatment for people in crisis and time and again, we have no place to send them. We have a shovel-ready project that will use no tax dollars that can relieve some of the pressure from the local areas and still allow people to stay close to their supported community. And yet we're, we're finding fault with this type of treatment. This is not appropriate for every patient, but it is an option and it is a safe option for some. I think the track record here, if you look at Cedar Hills, the track record is clear. The patient care has been good. And for us to turn around and say, "We have a, we have a perfect opportunity to offer another suite of services to our clients" and to turn that down is doing a disservice to those who are most in crisis in our communities. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share today.
Thank you. Okay, um, well, I can, I can go through next steps, um, since we have you all here still. Um, as you know, we have declared the NewCo application complete. Um, and this, uh, holding this public meeting is, is one step in the certificate of need process. We will have the public record open for this particular public meeting until April 29th. Uh, and the recording of this meeting will be, uh, posted and, and shared to our certificate of need website. So again, that record will be open till the 29th. If you would like to provide public comment regarding the application, um, that record is still open until June 1st, uh, at which time that is, that's when the Oregon Health Authority's draft recommendation is due. Uh, with that, I will go ahead and conclude the meeting. Thank you all for your time today, um, taking time out of your, your day to participate. So have a good day.
Hey you, thanks for listening all the way to the end. We enjoy that you enjoy being proactively involved and participating in all this reform and political jazz. Uh, it can get pretty dry, but I know that I personally dig diving down rabbit holes. Please give us some feedback on that because we're certainly happy to adjust if you would prefer things are just long-form, unedited or you want us to start cutting jazz up and throwing in commentary in the middle, especially when these things like the Senate hearing and like these public hearings aren't necessarily widely accessible to the public. We like to just kind of include them for the most part, unedited. And, uh, hope you enjoy that too, but totally again, willing to evolve and grow. Please, uh, write a review and rate the podcast so that others can find us. And definitely please, if you yourself or someone you know has been personally affected or had a personal affiliation with a UHS facility, this is your opportunity to lend that testimony to Oregon so that they can make an informed decision on whether the certificate of need is really appropriate for NewCo. So all the information's in the show notes. If y'all have any questions, definitely let us know. Thank you for your support and advocacy. And reminder, it's April's Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month and we are creeping up on the first anniversary of the murder of Cornelius Fredericks, the 16-year-old foster child murdered for throwing a sandwich at Lakeside Facility in Kalamazoo, Michigan last year on my birthday, April 29th. So if you are ready to join us on reigniting that campaign for him, it is time. It's been almost a year. This young man is in an unmarked grave and we all watched it happen. So no justice, no peace. Justice for Cornelius.